Like to call us to order, welcome to the Moore County Schools Board of Education Special Meeting. It's our public hearing on February third, two thousand twenty-five at our central office location at five thirty P. M. I would like to ask for approval of the agenda.
Can I move?
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I would like Dr. Doll to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I'm sorry, is it as modified?
Yes, absolutely, yes, as modified, yes, sir, okay, ready for the pledge of allegiance?
Please join me in facing the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Ms. Davis, if you'll lead us in a moment of silence.
Yeah, but this evening, we would like to take just a minute to think about the lives that were lost just this past week in Washington, D. C. The families there are affected by that and just if you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, want to welcome everyone to our public hearing tonight, we're so glad you're here. This is a public hearing on the proposed replacement of Carthage Elementary. We welcome comments from members of the public on the superintendent's recommendation. We did make an agenda correction or addition to add discussion on K eight, this K eight model and any other questions that you might have about that. We are, his recommendation is to replace Carthage Elementary on a new site with a core capacity of six hundred. We are going to limit our time to six minutes per speaker, policy twenty-three-ten states three minutes. However, we waive this at the regular board's business meeting on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five for the sole purpose of this public hearing. A clock will be displayed on the screen to allow the speaker to know when his or her time is up. The speaker is expected to stop when the countdown is complete. And we appreciate your respectfulness to confine your comments only to the replacement of Carthage Elementary. And I'm turning it over to Vice Chair Davis to invite our next speaker up. Oh, sorry, my mistake, sorry.
You got it, Ms. Davis?
Madam Chair, if we may, before we open the hearing, just provide that background information that we had noted we would provide on how we've got to this point, and Ms. Purvis has added her notes on K eight as well.
Okay, thanks, sir, sorry, forgot that.
Thank you for the opportunity to come this evening, we appreciate you all being here and thank you, board, for allowing this opportunity. Just want to share with you a deeper look at the background work that has gone into the recommendation tonight. First of all, as you know, Carthage was built in nineteen fifty and it's had several additions. In two thousand and twenty-two, following a meeting of the interested citizens at the courthouse, the Carthage Town Board of Commissioners drafted a resolution expressing their willingness to have a new school built on a new site. In the spring of twenty-two, the district commissioned a comprehensive facility assessment which cited significant needs on the Carthage campus. Now you know why I brought this up here, because I can't see that far. In December of two thousand twenty-three, after consensus and recommendation from the construction committee, the board approved the master facility prioritized list, placing the replacement of Carthage with the ability to hold one hundred and fifty to two hundred additional students for future capacity needs as priority number two. Following the approval of the master prioritized list by the board, consensus of the construction committee supported holding a stakeholder meeting at Carthage Elementary to share the two most viable options for Carthage moving forward. That meeting was attended by representatives from the staff, school improvement team, PTO, town of Carthage, Carthage Centennial Committee, and parents. Attendees representing their various groups were presented with the first question, renovate the old school or build a new school? All were overwhelmingly in favor of a new school. Next, the attendees were presented with two options which had been reviewed by the construction committee. Build the new school on the current site, and we presented possible plans which would look, which would work and what it would look like, or build the new school on a new site. After sharing the two possible scenarios and learning the constraints of building on the small seven-point-six acre parcel, the choice to build on a new site garnered one more vote of interest than the current site. However, those who were in attendance said they were not adamantly opposed to a new site. Following the stakeholder meeting, the consensus of the construction committee supported having Ittri, who's out of N. C. State, to complete an updated review of future capacity for Area One, which is all of the Union Pines area. Updated capacity projections indicated that if planning for the next ten years, a new school would need to have a capacity for six hundred in order to allow the whole elementary attendance number of Area One to be at a suggested eighty-seven percent capacity in ten years. With the consensus in support of the board's construction committee, the current recommendation is to build a new Carthage Elementary School on a new site with a core capacity of six hundred. At the time of the build, classrooms may only be built out to four hundred and fifty. We have had some discussion brought up about a K eight model for Carthage Elementary. You know, we currently have two K eights within our district at High Falls and Westmore, and they both serve a great purpose. Each school serves a total population of two hundred and seventy-five or fewer students. Both of those schools are located in geographical areas that span many miles but have a sparse population and not much population growth. Some districts who are building K eight schools are doing so as they consolidate two or three smaller schools into one newer school in order to increase efficiency. Although we certainly appreciate the role a K eight serves when appropriate, there are a few reasons we feel in this instance, a K eight is not appropriate when replacing Carthage Elementary. A K eight replacement for Carthage would be a very large K eight with approximately six to seven hundred students from the opening or the onset of the school. A larger core of eight hundred would need to be built in order to provide the room needed for that extra capacity of one hundred and fifty to two hundred students that we talked about, meaning that in the next ten years, that K eight school would reach the eight hundred mark. In an effort to be fiscally responsible with taxpayer money, we do try to maximize the use of capacity that we have before adding additional capacity. If built, the students who currently attended Carthage would no longer feed into New Century. Approximately three hundred seats would be left unused at New Century, and we already have unused capacity of one hundred and fifty seats at Cranes Creek. This would be a result of approximately four hundred and fifty middle school seats unused while building an additional middle school of the K eight. As we have shared, we would need twenty to twenty-five usable acres to build a new Carthage Elementary. If the new building were to be a K eight, we would then need forty to forty-five usable acres to accommodate all of the athletic spaces required at a middle school. The cost of not only the land would increase, but the build of the school itself since the square footage would be significantly increased. Additionally, the movement of these students to a new school would uproot a long-established school culture. We know New Century was built in nineteen ninety-seven, so that's twenty-eight years, almost thirty years of culture there at New Century. The opportunity to provide the public, we are providing this opportunity for the public to give their thoughts on the current recommendation of a new school on a new site with a core capacity of six hundred, the K eight model, or other ideas for replacing Carthage Elementary School. We're doing that this evening, and we're grateful to those of you who've come to be with us and share your thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, turn it back up.
All right, I'll just copy what Ms. Purvis said, we do thank y'all for coming because we're genuinely interested in what your opinion is. I will just remind us, we typically have three minutes per speaker. Tonight, you can take up to six minutes, you don't have to take the full six minutes, but we want to give you the opportunity to say what you want, and perhaps we may have a question or two for you. We may interrupt that briefly, ask the question, and you'd be able to answer whatever, but it is a total of six minutes with the questioning as well. So I'll call the first three speakers, if you'll, when you come to the podium, state your name. And if you will, if you're employee, student, or just a member of the community. And the first three will be Lisa Moore, Christina Harrison, and Rhona Cash. You just begin whenever you're ready, we'll take care of the time, go ahead.
All right, good evening, Dr. Locklear and board members, I'm Lisa Moore. Not only am I in my twenty-fourth year of teaching at Carthage Elementary, but I was also a K eight student. The majority of my life has been spent on this campus, so its importance and future is near and dear to my heart. On January twenty-ninth, our staff held a teacher-led meeting to discuss the changes of Carthage Elementary as outlined in the last board meeting. I'm joined today by three of my colleagues, and together we'll be sharing data collected from our staff, offering our perspective on our vision for the new Carthage Elementary School. Our first data point addresses the possibility of establishing two schools. During our meeting, we surveyed thirty-three staff members. Of those surveyed, an overwhelming ninety-seven percent expressed their preference against the two-school model for Carthage. I'd like to briefly summarize the key themes for the public for our staff comments. Reasons for two small schools, there were no strong reasons to support having two small schools. One suggestion was from a team member that maybe look at a K two and three-five school setup, but the reasons against it was overwhelming. We have the community impact, Carthage is a small town and splitting students would harm the community feel. It may create conflicts among parents and students. Transportation issues, there are not enough bus drivers currently, and having two schools would double the transportation challenges. Staffing concerns, more staff would need to be provided for both schools, which could lead to difficulties in hiring and increased expenses. There may be confusion over which teachers and students go to which school. Building conditions now, current buildings have problems that are beyond cosmetic repair. Staff expressed major concerns about the conditions of the buildings now. This leads me to my next point, equity and division. There could be a divide between schools with one being newer and then the other one. This could lead to feelings of segregation among students. With our collaboration and community, we could have two, having two schools could limit this collaboration opportunities for teachers and reduce our sense of community. In summary, our data shows we have a clear vision for one school in Carthage. And now I'm going to go to the second data point. The second data point that will be shared with you tonight is that ninety-seven percent of our staff are open to a new school being built on a new site. Of that ninety-seven percent, seventy-five-point-eight said yes to a new site, and twenty-one-point-two said they liked the idea of the new site, I mean, the new school on the original site, but are open to exploring a new site also. Please listen as I share a brief comment summary for our new, for our site now and our new site. So this same site comments, one staff member prefers to rebuild the school on the same property because it feels like a hometown, it has a hometown feeling, and it's close to the community. Another one said that they believe it is a central location, but there are concerns about the safety due to it being so close to the jail and the courthouse. Our new site comments, many staff members feel that moving to a new site is necessary for safety reasons as the current location is too close to the jail, courthouse, bonds, and sheriff's office. They express concerns about traffic issues during drop-off and pickup times, which would be improved with a new site. There is a strong belief that a new site would provide more space for a larger school, more parking, and safer playground area for our students away from the street. Some staff members mentioned that the current site does not have enough land for future expansion, and this could lead to higher costs in the long run. In summary, the data shows that the majority of our staff believe that moving to a new site is essential for safety, space, and better facilities for our students, thank you, friends.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Ms. Moore, I have a question, so all three of you are going to be talking in sequential, right?
Right.
So keep in mind, this is a public hearing, so we can ask questions. So I would suggest maybe all three of you all stand fast, and then we can ask questions at the end.
Okay.
Yeah, what I'm asking is if you don't return to your seat, then we'll just ask a question at the end.
That's no problem.
Yeah, okay, thank you, is that, is that right?
Yeah.
Should I wait till they reset?
Yeah, he's, he's, yeah, he's going to reset it for us, you're good to go, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, good evening, Dr. Locklear and board members. My name is Christina Harrison, and I've had the privilege of serving as an exceptional teacher in Moore County for nine years, working with students of all ages and abilities. For twenty-two years, I was also a military wife. Those twenty-two years have allowed me to understand firsthand the challenges military families face, including frequent moves and the need for consistent, high-quality education for their children. And as we all know, Carthage is blooming with military families, so that is one of the main reasons I chose to speak tonight. This evening, I'm going to review our third data point, which is staff preference on building a K five school versus a K eight school. Of those surveyed, an overwhelming ninety-seven percent expressed their preference for the K five model for Carthage. I'm going to go over some of the advantages that we feel a K five building will offer for us. Safety-wise, younger students may feel safer when they are with kids their own age. It's important to keep little kids like kindergartners away from much older kids like eighth graders to avoid accidents and ensure safety. Developmental needs, we feel students in K five have similar needs and behaviors, which makes it easier for teachers to help them. Teachers who work with younger students know how to support their learning and behavior better. The community feel, a K five school helps keep our community feeling small and friendly. Teachers and staff can know all the students and their families, making the school feel like a home, like it already is. Scheduling and transportation-wise, having all K five students together allows for a simpler schedule that works well for everyone. Shorter bus routes mean less time on the bus for students, which is especially important since some students already have a long ride. Social interaction-wise, students can play and learn with others their own age, which helps them make friends and develop social skills. Grouping students by age helps them feel comfortable and reduces stress during transitions between activities. Our third data point, well, it'd be our fourth data point, my bad. Our fourth data point covers staff concerns about a K eight model. Of the staff surveyed, ninety-three-point-nine percent expressed concern about having a K eight model over the K five. I'm going to talk about our concerns. Safety-wise, younger students, we are worried about the safety of younger students being around much older kids. For example, like I said, kindergartners are not going to be as safe around a bunch of eighth graders. Scheduling conflicts, there are different needs in a K eight school versus a K five school. Planning activities for different age groups can be difficult. The schedules for middle school students may not work well for elementary students, and in a K eight school, the whole master schedule is going to revolve around the middle school. There is no room for flexibility, students would need to be bused to different schools for athletics, unless we did the forty to forty-five acres, which we didn't know about before we came up here, and it will create more duties for teachers. Behavioral issues, we foresee increased problems with mixing older and younger students that could lead to more behavior problems, for instance, older students might influence the younger ones negatively. And there are developmental differences, kindergartners and eighth graders are at very different stages of growth and learning. It may not be suitable for them to be together in the same environment. With ninety-seven percent of staff in approval of a K five school, we feel this is the best opportunity for our community, thank you.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Cash.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Rhona Cash, and I'm so happy to be here tonight to discuss the future of our children's education here in Carthage. For me, it isn't just about school buildings, it's personal. My mom, Leona Patterson, actually taught at Carthage Elementary when it also had a high school back in nineteen sixty-four. And I myself as well, and my children, walked these halls as a student. Now, after working here as an administrative assistant for fifteen years, I have seen firsthand the evolution of our school and our community. Growing up in this small town, I understand the close knit nature of our community and the importance of providing the best possible education for our kids. I've also witnessed the challenges and the triumphs, and I've developed a deep understanding of what makes our town special. Tonight, I'll be sharing some of the staff perspective on why we feel Carthage is, and its families and the surrounding area are better served by a school with a capacity of six hundred students instead of four hundred and fifty. Our fourth and fifth data points show that our staff surveyed an overwhelming eight, eighty-seven-point-nine percent are against a capacity of four hundred and fifty students, and eighty-four-point-eight percent are in favor of a student capacity of six hundred students. First of all, I want to talk about the four hundred student capacity. Some staff members like the idea of a smaller school because it can create a closer community. They believe a smaller school may have fewer behavior issues among students. In favor, however, there are long-term concerns that a school for only four hundred and fifty students might not have enough space for growing numbers of families in our area. Now for our six hundred student school, many staff members believe a larger school is necessary to support the growth of the community. A school built for six hundred students would provide enough room for future students and avoid overcrowding. They think it's important to plan for the future so that the school can accommodate more students without needing to expand soon after it's built. A large school would allow for more teachers and collaboration, and it could help with the overcrow- A large school would allow for more teachers and collaboration and it could help with the overcrowding in other schools nearby. Staff members also mentioned that building a larger school now could save money in the long run as costs for building materials may rise in the future. Staff members are open to helping other schools with overcrowding issues. As educators, we are here for the students regardless of where they're from. Overall, the data shows that our staff believes a six hundred student school would be better for the growing community of Carthage, providing more opportunities for students and teachers alike. Thank you.
All right, Charlie, I think we had two and a half minutes, um, in addition to those three. So we're at five minutes and thirty seconds. Yeah.
They're finished speaking.
Did you have, did you have questions though? Was it going to be within that timeframe?
I have a question for this group. Do you guys, are you tuned into what Mrs. Purvis means when she says core capacity of six hundred? You, you understand the significance of that? Okay.
I'm sorry. Uh, point, point of order, there seems to be some confusion. Uh, it's my understanding that the speakers each have six minutes and that does not include any questions and answers that we may have. So we need to clarify this before we move on. So again, let me state my understanding based upon the last meeting. The speakers each have six minutes. That's what we voted on. That does not include any questions that we have and their responses to our questions. That's my understanding.
I'm sorry. Uh, thank you, Mr. Hensley, for that point of order, but, um, no, we have three minutes, including the questions. That's, excuse me, six minutes, including the questions. Um, that's how we need to run it at this point. If we open up that, uh, you know, opportunity, we're going to be fair to everybody. But, you know, if you looked, we had a minute left for Ms. Moore. We had two minutes left for the next speaker and we had three minutes left for that. So we need to hold firm with what we approved at our board meeting. Um.
That's, again, I.
Yeah.
Again, how is that fair to the speaker? So are we supposed to interrupt them in mid-sentence and maybe we ask a question thirty seconds in? If, so let me say this, if they speak for six minutes, then we don't have any opportunity for a question, which defeats the purpose of a hearing.
Well.
I'm, I'm sorry. And secondly, if we, if we interrupt them, you know, just because we have a question and the question and answer takes half their time, how's that fair to them?
I see what you're saying.
Madam Speaker.
Only thing I would say right now is if we need to make a motion to change that, what we have on, on paper right now, we'd have to have a motion and we'd have to have a change.
Well, I, I don't believe, I don't believe, I don't believe we need a motion because it's a misunderstanding. It's, it's the, the six minutes was for them to speak. It was very clear.
Yeah, six minutes, but the question, the way I understood it was embedded in that six minutes because we are, we had the extra three minutes. And, you know, clearly they've already demonstrated that they're not taking up the whole time, so.
But that's just these, these speakers.
At, at this point, we're going to move forward with our questions inside of the six minutes.
Okay, I make a motion that we change that so that, to, I, I make a motion that we clarify uh, what we voted on last week. And the motion is that the speakers get six minutes dedicated to them, not including the question and answers that we have from the board.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on that point?
Yes, um, I remember it, uh, pretty much the same way my colleague remembers it, that we voted to suspend the policy, but we did not agree on any particular format that we would use.
Okay.
Um, I do think out of respect for everybody, I would like us all to try to keep our questions short because this is about what they have to say, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, that's good. It's a valid point. Any other discussion points?
Yeah, I have a discussion point is, again, uh, quite frankly, I, I showed up prepared to like suspend any time limit because these are the people we work for. And quite frankly, if somebody want, as long as they stayed on topic, if somebody wanted to talk for fifteen minutes, then, you know, that's, we should be here to listen to what, everything they have to say. That's how the county commissioners run their hearings. And everybody is very respectful. Everybody is jet brief. And if somebody strays off topic, then you rule them out of order and move on. So anyway, uh, six min, again, I go back. My understanding was six minutes, they, they get the full six minutes and then if there's any questions and answers, uh, question, answer period, there's no time limit on that. And then it'll just run its course and everyone will be, you know, respectful to everyone else's time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hensley. Any other?
Can we agree we won't interrupt them?
Okay, any other discussion? All right, hearing no other discussion, let's take a vote. If you would like to, um, add time after the six minutes for questions for each speaker, um, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. So it passes. So yes, we'll add the questions after each person. Okay, so we're back to our agenda. Did you want to say something? Okay, yeah, so Amy, if you'll get back, we'll get back on schedule here and if you'd like to pose your question to our three speakers. Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, the, the next question was whether we were going to let the speakers go out of order so that the four people from Carthage could speak together.
Okay.
Yeah.
So she's next.
Well, yeah, we'll go ahead and have.
Please.
Yeah.
Yes.
Ms. Blake.
We, we figured out, yeah. Moving forward.
Thank you. All right, good evening. Um, my name is Jennifer Blake. I've taught at Carthage Elementary School now for fourteen years and I am very proud to be here representing our amazing staff. We want to round things out and finish things off tonight by first thanking all of you for making Carthage Elementary a priority in your Moore County Facilities Plan. Our community is so in need and our students are so deserving and we are all very grateful. I'm here tonight to talk to you about what we as a staff would like to see in our new school. Regardless of what location, what size you all decide, we, um, have heard a lot of great ideas and we want to synthesize those into a clear vision of our future learning environment. First and foremost, safety is paramount. This means a closed campus to ensure that we know who is on campus grounds. We, it means secure windows, not floor-to-ceiling windows, but windows that provide natural light while maintain, maintaining safety and energy efficiency. And it means easy-to-use locks on playground gates. Internally, we envision adjoining doors between classrooms for added safety and flexibility as well as key fobs that open not only exterior doors, but classroom doors as well. The playground needs distinct areas for younger and older students, preferably located on the interior of the school grounds for safety and noise control. Next, functionality. We need classrooms that are designed for learning, not for show. This means more classrooms, not vast, unused, open spaces. It means maximizing usable space and minimizing wasted areas. We need ample storage in every classroom, cabinets, cubbies, closets, for both the teachers and the students. We need sturdy, age-appropriate furniture that can withstand the wear and tear of daily use and we need a cafeteria that facilitates smooth transitions, not bottlenecks and long lines. Accessibility is a non-negotiable. Our school must be accessible for all students regardless of their needs. This includes private changing areas and adjoining EC classrooms and ensuring that every student can navigate the building with ease. Technology is also key. We've heard requests for interactive screens in classrooms, but let's also make sure that we are integrating thoughtfully and effectively to enhance and not replace quality teaching. We also want to avoid the noise issues that we have experienced at other schools. It has been said that the roofs on the new schools are extremely noisy. We don't need excessive conference rooms or elaborate hanging apparatuses. We want functional, not frivolous. We want a library that's the true hub of learning with open spaces for collaboration. We want clean water, pest-free environments and climate control that works. We want enough staff bathrooms, a well-designed gym with good acoustics, heating and air, and a user-friendly car rider line. We would also love a multipurpose room. Truly, what we really would like to do is to be able to tour some other schools so that we can see firsthand what has been done, what works and what wouldn't work for our community. Finally, let's talk about the look and feel. While aesthetics are important, functionality must come first. Let's consider a new building logo to represent the new chapter. We want a school that is welcoming, comfortable and conducive to learning. We want a school that reflects our community's values and priorities. Our staff and students want, need and deserve a school that is safe, functional, accessible and equipped for twenty-first century learning. We need a school that our children, our teachers and our community can be proud of for years to come. Our staff view our school as a home away from home and we want to thank each person that took their time tonight to be here and show their support for Carthage Elementary. And also thank the Board of Education, Dr. Locklear, for giving us the opportunity to share our vision for our new school. We are all looking forward to what is to come. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, now it's time for questions.
Do you have any questions for them?
Yes. Uh, first, thank you all very much for taking the time to put this, you know, the faculty and staff together to provide input that's extraordinarily valuable. Uh, just real quick, show of hands, uh, all of you obviously, um, teach at, uh, Carthage Elementary. How many of you all live in the Carthage area?
Oh, microphone.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. So you all are, you all are.
We all live in Carthage.
Okay, good, good.
And she lives off, right off of Murdixville.
Okay, so my question to you is, uh, was there any discussion as to, or do you have any personal thoughts as to what you would like to see the old campus become? Once it's, uh, um, once it's empty?
We don't want it to be our school.
Well, we, right, we know that, we got, we got that loud and clear.
We don't want it to be our school. Um, there are several issues that are beyond cosmetic repair. Um, so, um, as a, uh, my personal thoughts that, um, it's going to take more than our budgeting here to fix that and to replace something else. So I'm really not sure what we could use that building for. Um, I do know that they do use the other buildings across county that were sold, um, like Aberdeen and different things, but they do not have kids in them. They, they have equipment and, um, they do not use the same, um, guidelines that we use for building a school. So that is my only concern for putting kids back into that building.
Yeah, okay, thank you. My, the rea, the reason I ask is really, it's, it's a community asset and I would like to involve the community in deciding what the disposition of that school campus will be and the time to start thinking about that is now. So, thank you.
Ms. Cash, did you have some, an answer for that question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just said, um, there's not a lot of places for children to play, um, in our town and that's important. And I think if, if the building had to go, we could make that a very nice park um, because they use Nancy Kaiser, but it's very, very small. So I think a nice something for the children to be able to, you know, go play or whatever.
It, it would seem important to preserve that auditorium for community use.
Good luck with that.
We have a lot of issues with that auditorium. Yeah, there's leaking in that auditorium constantly. Our music ledger is displaced quite a bit because of it. Um, so different things, the AC, the heat, everything. We have a lot of things that are wrong with the auditorium. It's a great space when we can use it.
Anybody, if nobody else has questions, I'll call the next three speakers. Or, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just hoping that we could get a summary of the data that you guys have, have produced. That's all.
Yes.
All right, the next three will be Peggy, Samantha, Molly Capps and Vic Allen. Whenever you're ready is fine.
Um, my name is Peggy Samantha. I do not live in the Carthage area. So I'm an outsider on that, um, in that reference to that. So just looking at schools overall is what I'm looking at. Um, and I remember K through eight school, schools when I grew up, this was in St. Louis. Um, but my thinking is that a K through eight school would involve um, less transportation in that kids from the same household who are in kindergarten or fourth or fifth or eighth grade could ride the same bus and it would be more of a community school. I understand right now that the middle school students go to New Century. So therefore there's separate bus routes for each school. And I'm thinking that it would save on busing if the kids went, had a K through eight school um, and could ride with their siblings on the same bus. Um, and I'm thinking that, um, you could have separate wings for the younger kids and the middle school kids so you could maintain a distance where the kids wouldn't interact with the bigger kids and be bullied, whatever. Um, and I think, um, I just think it would give a small-town feel, more of a small-town feel if the kids in Carthage went to one school, K through eighth grade. And, um, just pray that for the school board and that God imbue you with his spirit in making decisions for his children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Capps, Molly Capps?
Yes. Turn it on. Is it on? Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Molly Capps, a proud mom of three Moore County school students and also the proud and forever thankful principal of McDeeds Creek Elementary School. In two thousand and nineteen, I was appointed as the new principal of McDeeds Creek Elementary School, one of the very first elementary school builds that this board and our county commissioners would take under their wing. Prior to that appointment of opening a brand-new school, I served as the proud principal of Aberdeen Primary School on Kaiser Street off of Highway two eleven in Aberdeen. I tell you this because I've served on both sides of the spectrum in a school that was desperate, that was in desperate need of love and attention from the foundation to the rooftop, although we had plenty of love and high expectations and, um, all the things with our tight-knit Aberdeen community inside that building, to a school that is brand-new and state-of-the-art. This brand-new school is a constant reminder to me and every McDeeds Creek bull of just how blessed we are to be able to be in a brand-new building. As I think back on my time as principal at Aberdeen, I can only imagine what the phenomenal educators and Bulldog team at Carthage Elementary School are having to go through on a daily basis. Many tasks that are probably deemed the norm, as they were for my own team at Aberdeen Primary. For example, instead of focusing on instruction and student needs, we had to focus on reporting daily repairs to the maintenance department, negotiating for grant funds to help our playground and school garden, working closely with the Aberdeen Police Department for traffic and car line support, while also having a close relationship with the entire Aberdeen community because our campus was open, just like Carthage Elementary School, with multiple entry points and safety threats. This not only affects the quality of education, but also places a strain on resources, staff and student well-being. I had no idea how much time I spent as a principal and as instructional leader of my building focused on ensuring we were up and running every day until stepping foot in a brand-new building. I'm here tonight to encourage you to not only build a new K-five Carthage Elementary School, but do it now. Don't wait. Move forward with the superintendent's recommendation. We all know building a new school will provide students with modern classrooms and facilities that foster better learning, give everyone access to technology and improve overall resources. This new Carthage Elementary School will also create a positive impact on the Bulldog community by providing a space that meets the growing needs of our students while also allowing Mr. Wilm's to attract and recruit future Bulldog families, teachers and staff members. While the cost of constructing a new school is significant, the long-term investment will pay dividends by providing a safe, modern educational environment for our children for decades to come. I believe, we believe, a new Carthage Elementary School will be a wise investment now. Don't wait for our future of the Moore County community. A couple of months ago, while presenting at a state conference filled with educational leaders from all over the state of North Carolina, I made sure to let them know that we were tenth in the state for grade level proficiency among all students in Moore County schools. I also told them to either jump on board or get out of our way because we were on our move as a high-performing team. I urge you to make a statement now as the lead team for Moore County Schools and affirm Dr. Locklear's recommendation. I urge you to make a statement, move fast, move now. Do for them, those Bulldogs, as you've done for our McDeeds Creek Bulls. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Vic Allen. I'm an educator from Southern, or Calgary Christian School. I want to read something from Proverbs here. Chapter four, verse one, "Hear ye children, the instructions of a father, and attend to no understanding." From what I gather, my wife's a first-grade teacher. The grades one through five are essential to learning. Uh, right now, that should be held sacred. That's our base. There's very little talk of how we teach kids. We're talking about efficiency and safety in the building. We should be concentrating on how we're going to teach these kids. And teaching them to read, teaching them math, teaching them the essentials in an environment that is safe. But what I see from these consolidated schools, they're so big. All they are is monuments to government to say, "See, I built you this great big school." Sort of reminds me of the courthouse in Carthage, which I don't understand either. It's huge. Anybody been in there? It's huge. You can't even tell who's in the front of the courthouse, sitting at the front from the back. I've been to the Aberdeen Elementary School. How intimidating that is to a first grader. The hallways are as wide as this building. It's huge. Schools should be small, should, should be a community. Uh, the founding of this nation and the people that built this country all went to neighborhood schools. When I grew up, I walked to school. A lot of you did. You walked to school. Now kids are on buses for how long? Hour and a half? To and fro? And you have discipline problems on the bus, can't get enough people to drive the bus. I think the school should be strategically placed around the county. So that school is the middle. Because without a school in that, in that part of the county, the neighborhoods go away. People don't want to live that far away from a school. That way we know the teachers, we know kids. Uh, it doesn't have to be a palace. But I think K, K through five is our base. And right now, the schools aren't doing very well teaching that. Not at all. By the time they get to seventh and eighth grade, they don't know how to read. I know I get kids in my class from, from Moore County schools and other schools when they come here. Seventh graders, I teach seventh-grade Bible. They can't read. They can't write. They're used to doing everything on a computer. And all this new age learning doesn't seem like it's getting us anywhere. So, uh, small schools, however you cut it, small, simple schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll call the next three, and please forgive me if I mispronounced this name. Sh- Shanay Norris, maybe? You tell me how to do it when you get up here, honey. Stacy Caldwell, Jill Lungare. And there, there's only one more, so I'll go ahead and call it Tommy Phillips. You'll, you'll be the conclusion of tonight's speakers. Jill, okay, thank you, ma'am. You're, you're up, honey.
Okay, good evening. Uh, it's Shanay Norrod. I figured it was me. I am a military-connected family here and a mom to EC student and also typical developing child. Um, they both attend Carthage Elementary. My EC, uh, baby will be graduating from Carthage this year. So that is exciting, but, um, but yes, Carthage Elementary is great. Uh, there are some concerns, of course, there for safety and then also accessibility. Um, so just focusing on, uh, a location that incorporates safety and also allows like a child similar to mine that can engage in all areas the school has to offer and doesn't have to, uh, kind of be left out, you know, maintaining that all kids are here and inclusive. And, um, safety, of course, sadly, that's just something we have to think about in schools nowadays for not only the staff, but the students. And that's always something that crosses my mind with a child that's in a wheelchair, which my child is, and even my child that's on foot. So something that, um, maintains their security and safety. Um, other than that, I think it's great, uh, getting another location involved for this school and then keeping it at maybe a K through five. Uh, I think that's a great start.
Thank you, ma'am.
So this is weird, being on the side. Yes. I shouldn't be sitting there. No. You got a lot of questions for me, I bet. Good evening, um, board members, Dr. Locklear. My name is Stacy Caldwell, and I've been an educator for half of my lifetime. I'm here for 10 years, uh, for Moore County Schools and nine and a half years on the Board of Education. I'm also a Realtor, so I've come with all kinds of perspectives tonight. Um, I, um, I'm here to express, first of all, my full support for Dr. Locklear's recommendation regarding Carthage Elementary. I had the privilege of living in Carthage for 24 years, and in that time, I witnessed firsthand remarkable growth, transformation of our community. As a Realtor, I see this growth from a unique perspective. I don't, I just don't see new homes being built. I see new families moving in, new neighborhoods forming, and increasing demand is, is pretty much strong for a sustainable educational environment that can support this rapid development. While the idea of maintaining a small-school atmosphere may sound appealing, it simply isn't practical for the current and future needs of Carthage. Our community is growing, and we must ensure that our schools grow with it. We need facilities that can support not just the students we have today, but also those who will be joining us in years to come. I've also heard discussions about the potential interest in creating a K-8 school in Carthage. While that model may work well in smaller, less densely populated areas, it's not right fit for Carthage. We have over 3,000 residents in Carthage right now, and that number is only increasing. The K-8 model works in the northern Moore area because their student population is smaller. Carthage simply cannot be compared to northern Moore area in this regard. Our needs are different, and our educational strategies must reflect that reality. I don't know why, but I'm like nervous. This is weird for me. So I apologize. I, I urge the board to consider not just where we are today, but where we are headed. Dr. Locklear's recommendation is not just a plan for the present. It's a vision for the future, a future where Carthage continues to thrive and our children have the resources, resources, space, and support they need to succeed. And I will end, um, I 100% agree with Ms. Capps of what she said. She couldn't have said it, said it more beautifully. So thank you for your speech tonight. That was great. That's it. Thank you. And if I'm here to answer all your questions.
Hello, I'm Tommy Phillips. Um, Chairman Calcut, Vice Chairman Davis, members of the board and superintendent. Um, I got involved in this in '21 when the town manager in Carthage contacted me and said, "We need a new school, and the board's been talking about it, but there needs to be a way to generate interest among the people in Carthage to know that we need the school." And so we got involved, and, uh, I think we've been quietly working with the boards that have been here since that time. And, uh, the key thing I've taken away from that is no one has ever said, "We don't need a new school in Carthage." It's been for years, uh, the agreement of everybody that I've heard speak, that it was a need. For various reasons, including one I won't go into, but I think was not of any board's making, there was a diversion away from making a decision when I thought it was time to do, move forward. I am glad that this board has moved forward and is having this meeting and is ready to move forward. Uh, something else has been consistent, um, over this period of time is that, uh, each of the staff people that I've talked to over the time that I've been involved have all said that we need a new site for the various reasons that were very eloquently described, particularly by the first four speakers who work at Carthage. Um, I have a little background in education. I actually graduated degree in education and taught school one year. I wanted to come back to Carthage and join the family business. So I have been pretty much in Carthage all of my life. I didn't go to the school that we're talking about replacing. It was in another location on the other side of town. And that's where I started school, and that's where I went until I got into what would be called now middle school. And at that time, uh, when I came over, I think it was the seventh grade is when we came to Carthage, out of the president's facility. Um, we were in the high school building with high school students. And, uh, that was where I was from the seventh and eighth grade. We've made tremendous progress in how we manage in schools in this county. Uh, Carthage is in need of a change, in need of a new school. And the superintendent's recommendation is the right recommendation for Carthage. Um, it's good for, number one, the students. Uh, and that's all of our primary care. That's who y'all, as board members, are here to support, making the best decisions for children. Secondly, I think it's, a new building is good for the staff. You heard from some of them. Staff members who are in a school that is conducive to teaching and learning are helped in being able to do that. Uh, they've put up with for years some problems, some of which could have been resolved, but for some reason or other never did get resolved satisfactorily. And so I think that moving forward on a new school building is, again, the right decision to make. Teachers are the ones who really deliver to our students. So every decision that you make, whether it's building a school or related curriculum or other things and facilities, should say, "How do I help teachers deliver for students?" Uh, instead of having them do something that is not as productive as it could be. That's always challenging. Times have changed. I'm sure some of you who are teachers or have been teachers have seen many times changes that you wish had not occurred, but that did, and so forth. But this is the right thing to do for our students and our teachers. It's also the right thing to do for our community. I don't think anyone's mentioned, but was alluded to, that the footprint of Carthage is much larger than you would think. Uh, my son and daughter just built a house on my property. And if they were living in, they happen to be homeschoolers, they were when they came here. But they're in the town of Carthage. They elected to be in the town of Carthage. I'm in the county of Moore. If I had a child in my house, they would go to Farm Life. In their house, they would go to Farm Life even though they're in Carthage. We have other families that are citizens of Carthage whose children go to other schools. So when we're making this decision about where to build it and build a new school, we need to take into consideration what the footprint of Carthage is going to be in the future. And a lot of that's already determined. Uh, so you have the benefit of that, and you have, uh, choices to make. There's, uh, there's been a little...
Our timer, I'm sorry to cut you off, but our timer didn't make its noise. So your, your time is up, your six minutes is up unless you have just one final statement that you'd like to make. That, that'll be the conclusion.
I'll just repeat myself is, let's move forward quickly. It was mentioned by another person.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Phillips, I have, I have a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind. Uh, you didn't mention this, but I believe you're, um, leading or somehow involved with a community group that's been involved in this process. Is that correct?
I was chairman of group that was appointed by the Carthage Century Committee to try to elevate the interest in this discussion we're having.
Right, right. So, uh, so, well, first, let me say that, uh, we are not going to pussyfoot around. We are going to make up for lost time. I'll talk about that a bit in my closing comments. So rest assured that, uh, we're taking off on this, right? Um, if I could speak for everyone else, I think that's, I think there's no controversy on that. Uh, I do have a question, though, and, and you guys probably haven't addressed it, but that group, did they, did they talk about, um, a vision for the former campus, assuming that we abandon it?
We have not, but that's a discussion that I think is important. I can tell you, I spoke with a person who lived, and I grew up right across the street from the cafeteria. So I'm familiar with being right in that community. And I, I talked to one of my neighbors today, and they love the school being there. They feel safe with the school there. So their interest was more in what's going to be next. So I think it's a good thing to be talking about.
It's an, it's important to involve the community in that decision, but please continue.
And I think some things were mentioned here, whether there's a need by the school administration for, uh, that y'all see or that you, uh, uh, as mentioned apart, there's various things can, that can be done with that. But there's very, uh, there'd be, this is a large piece of property in Carthage when it becomes available. And you're correct, is that auditorium would be great. The gymnasium's being used a lot now. And so there are reasons to keep those things in use in the community. Uh, and so I think that that's a good thing to consider as you move forward.
Yeah. So just, just let me share a couple of thoughts, uh, for you all to think about. First of all, uh, the, the elected officials, both the Carthage Commissioners, and we do have a Carthage Commissioner or two here, uh, the county commissioners and the school board, we, we need to get together and have a conversation about, you know, perhaps government uses of it and what the respective communities want. But, you know, possibilities include, uh, you know, preserving the, uh, the auditorium and gym and then converting the rest of it to government offices, whether they're, uh, you know, county offices or the central office, or we move some of the people from Pickney over there. So, so there's a possibility that there's some sort of government offices. Uh, it could just be sold to a developer to do whatever they want. Uh, or it could be something like they're doing in Aberdeen now with the old Aberdeen Elementary, where it's kind of a private-public partnership, where they're preserving some of the buildings for use for the community, uh, and then the rest of it is, is development. But that is an important piece of property due to its location in Carthage. And I think that what happens to that campus is going to be very important to the future of Carthage. So I just believe that, uh, we need to consider it carefully, and we need to get input from all the stakeholders. So I, I just, I just ask you to, you know, as a de facto, I, I ask everyone that's a resident of Carthage to think about it, and, uh, you know, please let us know your thoughts. Uh, but the time to think about, as I mentioned earlier, is now. So thank you.
Well, I think that, you know, it's always good to start thinking about things that you're going to make decisions about in the future and see what options you have out there. And you've mentioned several that would be good, and some mentioned by others here today. So, um, I know I'll take it back to my group and say, begin to think about this. It may not be next week that they're going to talk about it, but somewhere in the near future, as you get that building underway and you begin to turn your attention to this, uh, then we'll be... And I know you've got a lot of things on your plate. That list of things that need to be done just in the area of construction is a long list. So you've got a lot of challenges, but a lot of opportunities.
Well, and again, we are, we are not going to mess around on the construction. We are going to move out sharply. I assure you of that.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question of a previous speaker? Ms. Blake. I don't know where you went. Can you? She left. Okay, never mind. Sorry. That was...
Okay, I will, I will ask my question. So, I hope you don't mind the fact I've been on my computer, I've been taking notes, and I was having trouble keeping up with her, but she was talking about avoiding noise, and there was something particular about the construction of the school. Can you, can you kind of explain that or flesh that out so I can add it to my notes?
Okay. So, in our comments from our staff, they were aware that the roofs on the new schools created a lot of noise. And so, that may be one of the things that we need to ask the other schools to make sure that we don't have that noise solution for our community, I mean, our building.
So, do, I guess if I could ask a follow-on question, I mean, is it, is it, there's not sound baffles, so it's echoey, or is the, is the ceiling creaking? You know, what exactly, is it?
It creaks.
It creaks? Wow.
It, correct me if I'm wrong, but the temperature plays a part in it, too. It's, yeah, as the building warms up, it starts to creak and pop and crack, and it could be distracting, especially to longer children. Thank you ma'am. Yes, thank you.
I, I do just have one comment, is I am very appreciative of everyone who steps forward, especially the faculty and staff members. You know, we, we get, other than one-on-one, we get very little feedback, so it is, it's sincerely appreciated by me and I'm sure the rest of the board, you know, taking the time to put the committee together and, and step forward, please, anytime, step forward. That's what that podium is for. Come up and let us know what you're thinking and what we can do to help you. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from board members? All right. Just on behalf of the board, and we're going to have our comments, but I just thank you all for being here echoing what Mr. Hensley said. It's great to see everyone here tonight, and I know we had our online portal where our construction committee's going to meet tomorrow, and we'll, we'll have that input as well. So, we are at item three, board comments.
Before we get to board comments, I would like to, as you mentioned, we have a construction committee meeting tomorrow, and any board member that would like to share their observations now, I would like to, or you can share them with me privately, but I would like input as everyone's thought, because I want to make sure that everyone's thought's represented. So, you know, if you want to speak now, please do, if not, please let me know by tomorrow, too.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley, that's great. We'll start our board comments now. Mr. Benway, would you start us off, please, sir?
Sure.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight, expressing their opinions and their interest in a tremendous project that lies ahead. As Mr. Hensley said, come back and talk to us some more, we're all ears, okay? So, thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Bruno.
I just want to say thank you to everybody. We really appreciate you taking your time and coming. Thank you very much.
This might not sound very original, but thank you, all of you, for being here. No, it's, it's great to get the community input and, you know, the variety of perspectives and points of view, and I particularly want to thank the, the Carthage Elementary contingent for the organized work you did, collecting that data and bringing it to us. But I, I, you know, I, and I'm sure the whole board appreciate the opinions of everybody who spoke today.
Mr. Hensley?
Yes, I want to say, I got three things to say. One is, I can assure everyone here that, that every elected official, everyone on this board, the county commissioners, certainly the Carthage commissioners, but every elected official in Moore County wants appropriate facilities for our schools. And every elected official is willing to pull out, you know, the purse and pay for them. We just want to make sure that we're making the right decision and that we're getting value for our money, right? So, I can assure you of that, because I've talked to most of them. You know, as was pointed out earlier, we are making up for, for lost time, and we will, we will be, you know, making decisions rapidly and, and executing the decisions as fast as possible. You know, obviously, there's, there's constraints there, but decision, decision-making is not going to inhibit, you know, the process. And then finally, I want to say, and I've been advocating this for a long time, and I believe this board's going to implement it next month, is we're going to have a well-understood, defined, and inclusive planning process that gets input from all the stakeholders. And the stakeholders are, you know, in this case, it's the public, it's all the members of the school board, and it's the county commissioners and any community that's affected. And we're going to get that input from the stakeholders at, at each step of the process until we arrive at the correct solution. And we're going to do all that concurrently with all of our projects. So, if you look at, you know, Carthage Elementary, you guys are up on deck, there's zero doubt about that, but if, if, if you're elsewhere and you're looking, man, I'm here, priority 10, do not worry, because we're going to do concurrent planning, so that when funding becomes available for any given project, we're ready to execute. So, anyway, thank you for your time, as everyone else says, it's, it's great to hear from the community, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. Mr. Johnson?
If you thought it was unoriginal then. Right. Thank you, especially, I will reiterate, Dr. Capps sharing her urgency around the issue and having been on both sides of the issue, the old building and the new, Carthage staff as well, very thankful for that. I also just want to say, I really appreciate this process of, I think this is a, a good model of gathering public input, being able to ask some questions to clarify things. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
I'm not going to tell y'all thank you. I do thank you. I'm, I'm going to point out the PTO group that's here, they haven't stood and spoke, but I'm sure that they weighed in a lot on the advice that was given by our staff, so I appreciate the staff's bravery and the PTO pushed them along to, to have their voices heard. We appreciate it, and we, we are moving full steam ahead. And I do want to thank Ms. Purvis, I know is taking notes, and she's going to give you what you, what we want and what we need, and she, her and her team are going to do an excellent job.
And just to conclude, these are exciting times, they're well overdue. I just want to applaud our superintendent and our Moore County Schools team for all of the work. I applaud our communities for stepping up in support of their school and our, and our whole Moore County Schools. Thank you for all the hard work that you've done to get us to this point, excuse me. And it's just, you know, we're ready to move forward, we're ready to have our construction committee meeting, you know, put the plan in place, and I fully support the superintendent's recommendation based on the comments that I heard tonight. So, thank you all so much for being here, for coming out a little bit late and staying, and it just, it speaks highly of Moore County Schools and our community. So, I really appreciate it. Seeing no further business, I have a motion, may have a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor? Say aye? Aye. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.